All I have from the last month is the principal's report that was shared with me.
I have, um, I have all of this.
Yeah, I don't get that.
Okay, today is Wednesday, September 8th, the time is 6:00 PM. This is the regular monthly scheduled meeting of the local Southampton School Committee meeting. We'll call it to order. All five members of the committee are present along with our superintendent and building principal and members of the public. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have the minutes of May 19th and August 11th for approval.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion to accept both of them?
Second.
Seconded. Question?
So were the comments that you emailed about, were those addressed? Did that get updated?
Me?
Yeah.
Right, well, the only one I can remember was the spelling of the vice principal's last name. What was, was there another one?
Yeah, it was like who's on what committee?
Oh, right, um. I don't know if it's supposed to be there or not be there. I didn't realize Rachel was taking the notes, the minutes. She here?
She's not for Southampton.
She sent them.
She sent them, but who's your, who's your note taker?
I see the minutes. I'm Sarah.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm sitting in the corner.
Okay.
Hi Sarah, I see you.
Sorry I didn't come to Rachel because I wasn't able to.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So it was just the spelling of my vice principal's last name was not correct? That's okay, that's okay, I just, I wanted it to be right before we got here, but I thought it, someone said it was Rachel, so that I emailed Rachel. And then, um, I believe they discussed at the last meeting who was going to be the liaison for each committee. So for the PTO, for the school council, um, and I didn't see that in the notes, so I was asking Austin if he had a recollection.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Then, that answers my question.
So for the August 11th minutes, if we could just update them to say that the PTO liaison is Allison.
Okay.
The, um...
School council.
School council is Austin.
Is Austin again, okay.
The collaborative is Juliana.
Julianne.
Julienne. I'm finance and select board. And as of that meeting, I was Hampshire Regional as well, but that's going to change tonight.
Julienne, have you been getting emails from the collaborative?
I do get emails from the collaborative.
Okay.
Yep, I do. And they have a meeting later this month, but I get updates.
Perfect, okay, should make sure.
So, okay, so as, so the August 11th minutes will be amended as noted. Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is public comment. The committee sets aside the first 15 minutes, we can extend it if need be. Any member of the public that has a connection to Norris, doesn't necessarily have to be a resident, just has to have a connection to Norris, may address the committee. We'll set the initial time at 15 minutes, three minutes per person. Ask that no person go twice until everyone's had a chance to at least go once. And, um, if you wish to address the committee, just step forward, state your name and your connection with Norris. Any member of the public?
Um, my name is Jennifer Johnson, I live at 57 Rattle Hill Road. I am here to ask that you make masks a family choice and not something mandated to you, but by you for a one-size-fits-all solution. I have two children in the Norris, one in third grade and one in kindergarten. Due to the issues of mask and the mandatory flu shot, we decided homeschool our second grader last year. Though academically, my daughter did great at home with me and had the consistency that many schools last year lacked, her emotional health suffered. Not getting that social aspect of being in school and having her peers around her was very hard, especially when the winter hit and most people were comfortable staying to themselves. So we made the decision to send both of our children to school this fall because we felt kindergarten was such an important development time for our son and because our daughter needs the social emotional health of going to school that going to school could provide, even if we did not like the idea of masks. That being said, this is my son's mask. It was still wet this morning when I found it in his bag and the smell is awful. It is covered in what he said is chalk from art class. Now, I don't know when it was changed for a different one, but I know every day he has come home with his mask that is soaking wet. Teachers have a hard enough job as it is in a regular year, never mind almost two years they have been dealing with this. They cannot be asked to please 20 kids' mask habits as well. I sent an email on August 24th to the entire school committee superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal, and even Desi about the effectiveness in masks with the link to a YouTube video from an expert industrial hygienist, Stephen Petty. In his video, he says, "Imagine a wall with doors and windows, openings, but with the doors and windows have no windows or doors, they're just open. The wall is made of a chain link fence to represent a mask. The windows and doors represent the gaps around the edges of the mask. Imagine the virus as a gnat, that gnat can readily get through the chain link fence, AKA mask, but even more easily can get through the openings at the side, that windows and doors." I would ask, if you don't know what I'm talking about, you can look it up on YouTube, it's very easy to find. If wearing a mask makes you feel safer, then great, you should be able to wear one, but my kids should have the same choice not to wear one and to get to see the facial expressions of their peers and teachers, especially during these critical learning years. Everyone should have the medical freedom to make the choices they feel are right for their family. I had Guillain-Barre syndrome and am advised not to get the flu shot or T-DAP because they could increase the chances of it happening to me again. I spent 10 days in Beth Israel Hospital in Boston and another two months in rehab learning how to walk and just function again. Is your risk of getting COVID greater than my risk of having GBS again? An article in the New York Magazine Intelligence that are published on August, this August 20th, talks about the uncertainty of masks being effective for children and the negative effects of them not being zero. There have been no studies that say masks along are stopping the spread in schools or anywhere really. The added open windows and fresh air ventilation could be the best mitigation against the spread. I did want to quote one thing from the article for those that didn't have the chance to read it. It's from Alyssa, and I'm going to pronounce her name wrong, Skechter Perkins, she's the director of Emergency Medicine Infectious Disease Management at Boston Medical Center. She said, "We know the risk to COVID from, to kids from COVID is vanishingly low, yet we're seeing it, but it's rare," said Skechter Perkins, the emergency medicine infectious disease expert. Out of more than 600,000 Americans' deaths attributed to COVID-19, 361 were kids and adolescents under the age of 18. In a much shorter 2018-2019 flu season, there was 477 pediatric deaths. We didn't have masks mandates then. Skechter Perskin noted, "And now we're in themselves, uh, we are in a post-vax world where adults have the opportunity to protect themselves and vaccines prevent severe COVID. I know there is a mask mandate in place until October 1st. Even those who put the pla, put it in place admitted they are using the masks as incentive to up vaccination rates. This should be a red flag to all. Now that there's a new member of the committee that I believe you said was a lawyer, I would urge you to look into legality of this mandate as we are no longer under a state of emergency. I wholeheartedly side with everyone's right to make the medical decisions that are right for them and not being told what they must do with or put into their body." Thank you.
Thank you.
Is our generic school email not working?
What do you mean?
I got the one you forwarded, but I didn't ever get one from her. And she did said she sent it to all of us. And I sent a test one and it never went through either. Not to like our individual name ones, the joint one?
Joint one?
I sent a test one and I never got that either. And I'm assuming none of you did because she never wrote back.
Was it to South Desi?
Yeah, that one.
I did email all of this to you guys as well, and I did get a couple of responses from Mrs. Plota, the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
That's why I'm wondering if it's not coming through, but, sorry.
We can check that. Any other member of the public? One more? Okay, we'll close public comment at 6:08. Circulation warrants, we're still on the, um, the individual signature. So I did sign off on the, on the last warrants that came out. I can forward copies if anybody wants to look at the expenses. Any announcements?
Uh, we have a new member?
Yes. Welcome Dylan. The, um, principal's report.
Okay. Our enrollment is at 474 students, which is two more than last month, although it feels like a little bit of a revolving door. We've had some students enroll late and we've also had other students withdraw, so, um, we're just two, increase of two with a total of 474, which includes 46 school of choice students in K to six.
Sixty-four?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
We've had a really smooth, uh, school opening. The first day of school went very well, parents were great about their dismissal plans, so it seemed to be flawless. With many more students riding the buses now, our parent drop-off and pickup line seems pretty good. I haven't heard any complaints anyway. Our preschool orientation was held yesterday, um, September 7th, and students in preschool started today, which was fantastic to see the little ones back in school. Some of the things we are doing right now with regards to curriculum and instruction, on August 24th, I invited all K to five teachers who, who teach reading in our school to, um, look at the new reading program that was purchased this summer called Open Court. They had a full day of learning about the science of reading and the shift that we're making from the three-cuing system way of teaching reading to teaching reading based on the science of reading. And that was, um, well-attended, it was a voluntary, they didn't, it wasn't mandatory that they had to come, but we had, I think, pretty good attendance, probably 99% of the teachers were there. We continue to plan for the implementation of that program and the assessments in the program. Mrs. Lukasiewicz, my new school, um, assistant principal, has been ensuring that all teachers have access to our second step social emotional curriculum this year, um, and we teach it at every grade level. She's also coordinated our morning announcements to align with the lessons that are being taught in the classroom, so we're trying to come full circle with that. Beginning next week, we will conduct our fast bridge interim assessments for the fall. All students in grades K through six, this assessment is completed in class on a computer in grades one through six, but we are going to, uh, conduct it one-to-one in kindergarten with our kindergarten students. All students in grades five and six have the opportunity to receive a school laptop for their use at school and at home this year. We also have the ability to, parents have the ability to purchase an insurance policy for the school year. These students will be bringing their laptops, um, from school to home to do homework and projects and things. But students in grades K to four will have a device assigned to them, but it's to be used at school. We're not going to be allowing it to go home until something changes and we have to do, hopefully we'll never have to go remote, but if we do, we're gearing up to be able to do that. I don't even want to say it. In other news, the nurses are conducting their yearly vision and hearing screenings to all students in grades pre-K to five, and that will be finished, I would say, in November, but they start right away with the older kiddos. Those preschool kiddos are really afraid of coming down in the nurse's office, so we kind of give them some time in the building first. And we weren't able to do this last year because of COVID. We've been able to have all grade levels eat lunch in the cafeteria at least four feet apart. Students have assigned seating now, just in case we have to do any contact tracing. There is a half-day of school on September 28th for teacher professional development, and I would tell you what we are doing, but I am still working on that. I'll give you a little bit of a summary. Teachers are going to be looking at the data from the interim assessment that we're giving, um, in the next couple of weeks. They're also going to be revisiting the, um, follow-up from the June professional development, which was the day after the last day of school, where they took a look at all the standards that they taught last school year and what, what did that, what did they not, what were they not able to teach and try to incorporate that into their teaching in the fall. So on September 28th, they'll have an opportunity to kind of relook at that to see where are we now. So I, but there may be a couple of grade levels that are doing something different, so I really didn't want to say that. And does anyone have any questions?
I had one that you might not know the answer to, though.
Okay.
About the insurance on the laptops. I thought I remembered last year then her doing something about where you purchased it for like, it was a different price for, if you wanted it for the future years, and then there was one price if you didn't want to. There was something like that that went home last year, and I didn't know if you remembered.
To my knowledge, yeah. To my knowledge, I thought it was just for one year and it was $30, and we're offering the same thing this year. I don't remember it being multi-year.
I thought there was some kind of incentive when she first came up with it, but I don't remember either, so.
I can check on that.
Any other questions? Okay.
Uh, superintendent's report.
Sure. Uh, good evening, everybody, and as Alyssa said, we had a very smooth start to the first few days for faculty, staff, and students. Uh, as everybody here knows, Desi did mandate, uh, a mask policy on August 24th, and the Board of Education did authorize the commissioner to require masks until at least October 1st, 2021. And at the end of this week, all the superintendents in Western Mass are meeting with the commissioner, where we're going to talk about some various things, and the mask policy is one of them as far as his mandate about reaching 80% vaccination rate before kids are allowed to take off their masks, so we'll, I'll keep, I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, we did have two administrative retreat days in August where we did some team building, we talked about the Desi acceleration roadmap, um, professional development we want during the year, and quite a bit of time on the COVID safety protocols. Uh, new teacher orientation, we did district-wide this year, and 17 new staff came, and it was a great day. They talked a little bit about licensure, the district history, confidentiality and special ed laws, and just some basic technology. So it was nice that they could use each other as a support system and get to know one another. We did have a district-wide convocation, which was also, uh, done in person and in Zoom, and we did recognize staff for longevity. COVID unson heroes from last year were also recognized. And there were presentations on COVID safety protocols and various mandatory annual trainings led by Kate Mesmer. Routine COVID safety checks, Stephanie Foss and I, uh, submitted a Desi application, so we can proceed with this, uh, even if we choose not to, we at least got the ball rolling. And we are going to hold the presentation tomorrow night at 5 o'clock via Zoom, it's open to the public and all school committee members, um, just to talk about the different testing options and, um, answered some general questions. Kim Florrick and Kate Mesner did submit the emergency connectivity grant application for $167,000. That's to improve the technology in our district, and, um, much of that is for hotspots with unlimited data service for students in our district that don't have access to Wi-Fi. It's, it's really, um, a, a great opportunity to bridge, uh, our, our students who really need the access for equity issues as well. Stephanie and I have started sending out COVID weekly updates every Friday to all school committee members as well as all families. Um, and I've been working on a district dashboard that will list school committee meetings, any, um, masks, uh, like mask policies are on there, um, the weekly updates will be on there, and hopefully Kim will, if it's not up yet, Kim will put that up, um, this week as well. And just so you know, we do have weekly superintendent meetings where we talk about all of these things, so we know where all the other superintendents, uh, stand on various issues. Pool testing obviously is a big discussion, and mandating vaccines for athletes, um, I think the big worry is lack of state personnel support for the pool testing, but I can talk about that later. And the biggie is that we are meeting with the commissioner, um, this, this Friday, so if anybody has specific questions, I'd be happy to ask them at that forum. And lastly, um, we did get a notice from Desi that Norris fourth graders will be participating in NEAP testing, which is National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's kind of like the nation's district report card. That testing probably takes about three hours, um, so I didn't want parents to be, um, surprised about what that was about, but more information for that will follow when we get it from the state. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions?
Do parents get results on that testing sent to them, or is that just held for the school and the state?
No, it's not even, they don't even list the school or individuals or classrooms. It's, it's just like one of the schools in Massachusetts, so we'll never know how our students did on that. It's just part of the national report card as far as math skills and reading skills go.
But there's more than one school in Massachusetts that's participating?
Yeah, we don't know who. And when I asked Kate Mesmer, when was the last time any school's been chosen, she couldn't even remember.
We were, a couple of years ago.
Really?
I know, that's why I was surprised we came up, we just did it.
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's like jury duty.
I want to say we, we did it the year that we shut down, but I'm not positive. Mr. Cusno, my vice principal, ran the whole thing. And I, they kept shortening it and shortening it because of the pandemic, but, um, I'm not sure, I'd have to look, maybe it was the year before. But we definitely did it in the last couple of years.
Okay, other questions? No?
All right, uh, chairs report, um, as you know, we, we had a special meeting with the, uh, joint meeting with the psych board where we, uh, filled the, uh, failure to elect position, and Dylan stepped forward and selected that, so I thank you for that. So I'll take this opportunity to, uh, we have an open seat on Hampshire Regional that I'm more than willing to give up. So under the 1966 agreement, one of us, one of the five of us has to be named as a voting member of Hampshire Regional to represent the town. And I guess just being late to the dance, that's the only chair left for you, so if you won't object to the nomination, I'll make it.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye? Okay. I'll, uh, send that email out to Margaret and let her know, take me off and add you. Uh, the other thing is, um, as superintendent indicated, there is a joint committee meetings, um, all district meetings tomorrow at 5 o'clock via Zoom about, uh, testing, COVID testing within students, it's, uh, for our purposes, it's an informational meeting only. All five of us may attend, but because of open meeting laws, you, we are prohibited from asking any questions because that would be construed as, uh, debate amongst ourselves. This wasn't posted on, on the town website, so, um, watch it, listen, and if you have questions, just email them individually afterwards, please, to Stephanie or the superintendent, so we don't get in trouble for that.
Are parents allowed to ask questions?
Parents are, just the committee, because it wasn't duly posted 48 hours in advance for the committee to meet, we can't have active debate, and you asking a question could perceivably be conceived as trying to persuade us one way or the other. So, um, if we do have questions, we should just email them individually and not utilize the group contact afterwards.
Is this something that would be a decision, something that needs a decision, so there'll be a future meeting on it?
I don't, I don't believe, you're, you're not anticipating a vote that night?
No, no.
Right?
It's just an informational evening, so, um, everybody in the community heard the same information.
Yeah. It's kind of like when we did the update on superintendent search, we just got together and shared all the information. That's all I have for the chairs report. Hampshire Regional report, uh, we met last, yesterday in a special meeting with the update on the masking. The regional voted to amend the handbook to, um, mirror the Desi regulations until October 1st, and they're going to wait for further, uh, information to come through on that end regarding the middle and upper grade, or middle school and high school level. That was the only topic discussed, discussed. PTO update?
They have not met yet, they are meeting September 14th at 6:30.
School council?
I will be sending something out soon for volunteers to jump on the school council if they so choose. And then we have Austin, who will be the liaison from the school committee and to the school council, so, um, that'll be in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And any update from the collaborative?
They meet later this month, so there hasn't been a meeting yet for the year.
Okay. And then the five district working group, we're looking at finding a meeting to get together, um, to get all the, just that group together to bring out the, um, to try and finalize the, uh, working agreement that we have of, of the five individual districts over central office. And brings us to the budget hour. Is this on 21 or 22?
This is on 21.
Okay.
This is the, um, line item transfers in the budget, so there's two documents there. So if we look at the, um, multi-page document first, um, the easy thing to do is to tell you to look at column S, and if you run down that column on each page, you're just going to see zeros. Um, until you get to transportation, and there was some savings in transportation. But as you know, that's a separate budget from the school budget. So essentially, we finished out the year spending our entire budget. As we had discussed earlier in the year, there was a chance that we may need to move some money from school choice, um, due to some of the legal fees and the, um, I-Wave machines and the, and the HVAC system. We did pretty well. If you look at your line item transfer sheet, the single page?
Mm-hmm.
You'll see they're mostly housekeeping items. One of the big one is the substitute line and the maintenance, which is the HVAC, and I had carried that over during the year in hopes that maybe we'd get some different money coming in to cover that, um, but we didn't. So ultimately, you'll notice under the totals that the increases are 71 and change and the decreases are 57 and change. And if you look to the side, there's a difference of, um, uh, it should be...
$1,501.
Yep. And that is what we're going to need to transfer from school choice into the budget to cover salaries, and I'll work with the town to do that. But that's not too bad considering all the things that we could have potentially needed to do.
The, um, on the substitutes and maintenance, can any of that be broken out and easily identified as COVID-related expenses? I.e., we needed a substitute because a teacher was quarantined?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we could.
It could be documented, because I believe that there is going to be unspent funds from the initial CARES Act to be repurposed. So if we had supporting documents on that, um, by this time next, by next Tuesday, maybe?
Yeah.
I could, um, see what magic could be worked over on the select board side.
Yep, we can do that easily. A big chunk of the, um, maintenance is the HVAC system, so that's easy.
HVAC, yeah.
Um, and the sped, and I assume a remote teacher could be considered, um...
Well, I had to get a substitute for the remote, right?
Right, so I mean...
Right.
Yeah, we could easily break that out.
Yeah, I mean, even, I, I don't know how much is going to be left, but I mean, even at the end of the day, if we can come up with $12,502.
Yep.
Right?
Okay, and I will, uh, send that to you, John.
Thank you.
And then, um, that's all I have for FY '21. FY '22, I just barely got the budget all in and, and, uh, with all the changes that we had made, but I haven't gotten a chance to go over it with Alyssa, and I want to make sure that all the payroll is in there and accounted for, and then I'll come next month in October and give you your first quarterly on that.
Okay. So on the 21, it requires a vote of the committee to authorize these transfers in order to close out the books. So are there questions on this piece? And I assume we can go ahead and, and perform that vote tonight, and then in the event that there are additional reimbursements to come through, you'll just adjust it?
That change, yep.
Yep.
So all moves that we approved is documented here?
Is there a second? Question? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Everybody has to sign it.
Yep.
Passes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then Bobby, after next month, when you do the quarterly update, then you're going to try and get back on the quarterly schedule and, and not be here every month?
Yes.
But you're free to join us if you want.
That sounds very exciting.
All right. And as of right now, there's no warrants before us to be approved? Those were all done electronically, correct?
Correct.
New business. First on the list is, uh, possible mandatory vaccination for staff. Mr. Bonneville?
Thank you. So I, I've sent you a draft policy that was drafted by our attorneys. So far, there are three districts in the, uh, in the state that our attorneys represent that use a very similar policy. And I've just given this to the unions today, and I'm not looking for a vote on this, just really gauging your support or interest in this, but, um, for people who are listening, it's pretty much that COVID vaccines will be mandated for all the employees as well as independent contractors, consultants, substitutes, and volunteers who are going to be on school premises on a regular basis. And this is really to minimize the risk that individuals could pose a direct threat for students. Then this would require all employees to provide documentation that they've been vaccinated, and they would also have to sign a, um, a liability... And they would also have to sign a liability waiver form, which I haven't received from the attorney yet, indicating that they're not going to hold the district liable for any potential side effects of the COVID vaccine. And if you're not able to get the vaccine or choose not to, you would be required to provide documentation on a weekly basis. And the test must be a PCR, PCR test. We would also provide a list of locations that Stephanie's updating right now. And that COVID vaccinations are free, and if an employee fails to either get a vaccine or test weekly, they could result in possible discipline, up until including termination of employees. I think we are roughly, probably over 90% already. And I think the unions in general, I'm hoping are supportive of this, since the MTA came out in strong advocacy for a vaccination policy. So the next step, once we decide yes, this is something that we believe in, or no, I'd get feedback from the unions. And if the Southampton Teachers Association does not support this, we cannot move forward because we need to collectively bargain this policy with them. So we need their support as well as yours.
I'm just curious why you feel, I'm not taking a position on this, but what, where is the advice that this needs to be collectively bargained?
Our attorney. And various school committee members in various districts within Hampshire Regional have asked about the vaccination policy back in July and August, which is why I'm bringing it forward, because I'm very proud of that we have over 90% vaccination rates. But we do get an occasional phone call from a parent worried, hey, how do I know that my teacher is vaccinated or not? And we can't legally say anything.
And right now, the statistics that we're relying on are strictly voluntary, right? Staff have, staff have not, specifically within Norris, the staff have not been required to produce the certificate that just been asked, and 94-ish percent are. So we don't know if the other six are really never going to happen because they have legitimate medical exemptions that would prevent it from happening anyways.
Right, we don't know that.
We don't know that data yet. So this is informational only for us?
Yeah, and I'm curious if you support a policy going forward in the making? Because once, if the union accepts it, then it will be brought forward for your vote for policy. But at this time, it's not. I'm just gauging your support.
I am in full support of having this policy in place. Everyone else, you know, all the major hospitals are doing this. UMass Amherst as an entire huge organization is requiring their entire campus be vaccinated to be present. So I think working with a population that's unvaccinated children who can't get their vaccine, I think we should ensure that the staff is as, protects the kids as best they can by being vaccinated. So I am in full support of this. I think we're in a new world where public health needs to be addressed, and this is how you address public health, by getting a vaccine that's been proven effective.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm a little iffy on it personally, like I'm not all for it. I mean, I'm vaccinated, I'm for vaccinations, I'm not against vaccinations, but I don't feel that in a school it needs to be made mandatory quite yet. There, I mean, I'm for it, but I'm not. I'm very on the fence about this one. I don't think it should be forced. I don't think you need to show a vaccination card everywhere you go. We've never had to do that for something like the flu shot, which we also at one point tried to make mandatory, so I'm very in between on this one.
So are you opposed to the, if you don't have a vaccine, the weekly COVID testing?
No, I mean, if they're testing the kids in school constantly, especially with pool testing and things like that, I could see, I just don't, we went from having to, you know, if you want to get it, you can. If you don't, now everybody's got to get it. I'm just, I'm not comfortable with people being forced into a vaccine.
I would also be open to supporting it pending further discussion. But I think we need to keep it on the table and find out the other factors, and then we can kind of haggle over the details.
I guess, the, did you want to jump in before I do?
I'll just add, you know, Governor Baker has mandated all state employees be vaccinated, provide proof of vaccination by October 15. As Julian pointed out, there was, UMass has done it, I believe Newton Public Schools has mandated it. I wouldn't be surprised if it came down as a DESI policy as well. I'd be curious to see what the unions have to say before really getting into discussion. I think it's for a little, without a pending motion on the table, I think discussion about adoption is pretty much it.
So I'm just, I'm curious about, well, I'm not curious. I mean, I have a difficult time, a difficult time mandating something. I also, having been the member that's gone through the battle royales in the past, I'm not, I'm not looking to make this an issue to fight with the unions over. Now, if the association comes back and say we're 100% behind this, then, and we're just rubber stamping it, considering we have one employee who is not collective bargaining, and everybody else is under collective bargaining, if, within Norris.
I'm like...
I'm just saying, I mean, actually, we have two now. But if it's something they want, then okay. If it comes with strings attached, I'm not so sure, especially knowing, you know, if we're already at the 94% rate, I don't know that we could actually achieve 100%. I would be surprised if we could. I don't know how much better we could go. Now, you want to make it, you want to make it a condition of hiring going forward to new staff? I'd be more up to that, but I kind of relate this to, I mean, I believe everyone should have the flu shot, but that's just my take. I don't want to make it mandatory.
But it sounds like it's not a condition of employment. There's just, if you're not vaccinated, now you're going to be tested, right?
No, I'm just saying where I would be more open to it, it's, you know, if,
If they were all on board with it.
And the association only got this today, they haven't had time to dissect it or to come back, but I mean, I guess I'd want to hear what their take is on this before I...
As a parent, when I read it, I went into an instant panic and said, oh my goodness, if we're mandating this for all the staff, then as soon as the children ones out, they're going to say it's mandated for them. So that went through my head instantly as soon as I saw this, and I know that's not on the table yet, but as soon as I read it, that was the first thing.
Yeah, that would need to come from the state.
Right. But that, like from the parent's point of view too, like that was my parent's side of me.
I understand.
Not the school committee side, so.
I think after the year that we've had, I think the committee is probably better suited to listen to mandates that are statewide than to try and be the fourth community to move forward with it.
Yeah, I think we just have to take one thing at a time, you know, and, you know, continue to plot our course and worry about the child vaccine that's not even out and approved yet. You know, we'll leave that for another day, you know, maybe another year, it sounds like.
And the other thing I would say is if we are going to move forward with this, you should tack on to who has to be as school committee members. I mean, we can't pass a policy and say everybody below us has to do this. Again, I'm not saying I'm going to vote in favor of it, but if we were to do it, it's got to be across the board. And my other question would be is I would be very interested to hear what your transportation had to say if we were to roll this out, because I assume as a contractor, every bus driver would have to be in...
The copy guy who comes in and fixes the copy.
Right, well, I'm more concerned about the busing in the state that that is right now, where a lot of communities can't even get their buses. I mean, we have ours. Our bus drivers all came back, which is great, but, you know,
We could lose them if they choose not to.
What's the ripple effect when we include contractors?
You're right, because parents have asked about bus drivers, and they're technically, they are contractors. The, we have a contract with the company, so we'd have to check what legal about that. I talked with Bobby today. I didn't ask specifically about bus drivers with our attorney.
Because I feel like that would have to come from there.
Yeah, that might, yeah.
Yeah. And I think this is the year we're negotiating, we're coming up into a negotiation cycle with the busing company, right? Which is later on our agenda. So perhaps maybe we should schedule that for an update for, assuming that we get feedback from the CBA, then maybe we should schedule a executive session to receive their feedback.
So this will go to all the different school committees? You'll present it, we're the first ones? And then we'll regroup and, under executive council, after we hear back from the association?
Right, and each school district, each union can yea or nay it. So, but it's the general policy that they're all presented with.
Is there any discussion about, like, obviously, one additional safety measure for an unvaccinated individual is the weekly testing? Is there also maybe double masks, strongly recommending double masking in that situation, or any sort of other protective measures?
No, we could definitely look into that. And I know one of the local schools are having anybody who's unvaccinated wear K995 masks. But then again, if we mandate that, we have to supply them. And that's like, you know, two bucks a pop, so if every day they need a new one, that's going to cost the district money as well. But that's a good idea as well.
Okay.
Just the way I'm reading this policy, however, I don't see that there's a choice to not accept the vaccine, to provide documentation that you're unable to receive the vaccine. Is that correct?
Can you say that again?
The way the policy is written, I know we were talking briefly about if someone chose not to get the vaccine. The way I read the policy says they have to demonstrate proof either under ADA or with a, and I mean the religious exemption or the medical exemption, that they're unable to receive the vaccine. Is that, is that my correct reading of it?
Correct.
So they can't choose not to? They would have to have a medical?
Yes. No, 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 no. If you choose, oh, no.
That's kind of the way it's written.
So there's no, the way I'm reading it here, there is no choice to not receive the vaccine. Receiving the vaccine would become a condition of employment unless you met a specifically defined exemption.
No. That, well, that is not...
Where does it say that then?
Well, I don't know. This is, the attorney drafted this, but if you have a choice. So if you're a teacher and you don't have a medical concern, but you're just opposed to it for whatever reason, you could choose to test weekly.
Because the way I'm reading it here says...
Unable to receive.
Unable to receive. So to me, that would require, I read that as you would have to provide some documentation that there would be an exemption that you'd have to get. Otherwise, I mean, if it's simply choose not to get, I personally don't see the point of it, of a policy like this at all. And you could just say, I'm not getting it. I mean, the whole point of having a policy for mandatory vaccination is that it's mandatory. If it's simply, I choose not to get it, then it's not mandatory, right?
If you choose not to get it, then you're tested weekly, so I think that alleviates fear and anxiety of a parent that their student is safe.
I understand the concern. I'm just saying, as written, you know, reading that, that does not say that. That's just how, as a policy, I'm reading it here, so I think it would be interesting to go back to...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Just to, just because as I'm reading it, as I'm interpreting it, I see it as unable. Unable does not equate unwilling.
Exactly, so thank you for pointing that out.
And it does say, it does point to, like, it specifies ADA, reasonable accommodation, religious exemption. So then it's confusing because the next paragraph, because it says employees who choose to receive the vaccine may stop participating. So there's a little bit of a discrepancy in the language.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to table this for all business?
Right. Thank you for your feedback.
All right. Next on the agenda is building use for outside groups during COVID. And this may be a broader subject, but specifically, we received a communication from the SYAA. President requesting consideration for the use of Norris Gymnasium commencing in December for basketball.
And he is here.
He, Nora? Or Patrick? Well, I'm pretty sure I know Nora, she's not here. All right. So this is an item on the agenda, and we have a communication, so if you want to address the group on this issue, you certainly can.
I think this will be pretty straightforward, and I just want to let you know how much we appreciate you letting us come tonight to speak to this issue. So we are in the process of planning our basketball season, which we missed last year due to COVID-19. And in the process of starting to put plans together, we learned that Norris has a policy of no gym use. We talked to Mickey about it, and so that would really put us in a position where unless we can secure outside facilities, which would be somewhat difficult and expensive, then we might not be able to move forward with our basketball season. And I think that there are implications there that need to be thought about moving forward. You know, we have a high school program, this is where a lot of the developmental stuff happens. A lot of these kids end up in those programs. And with one year of no basketball, I think we're fine, because nobody was playing basketball. But if we go into the second year with no basketball and everybody else is playing basketball, that's a full year of skill development that we can't get back, plus all of the fun and social stuff that happens for the well over 100 kids that we serve. So I did notice, Mickey had told me that the policy was COVID-related, which I think everybody understands. But there was also a conversation about the storage in the gymnasium. About a third of the gym is being used for storage right now, so you could create the social distancing space required to have the school open. And so I don't know that this is the case, but I do want to make sure everybody is aware of this. That SYAA would be more than willing to listen, to look at a proposal to help pay for storage for those items if that is really a problematic piece of all of this. So we do have a decent budget, and we would be, I think we're good community members. Do everything that we can for the school, and Eliza, we'd be more than happy to take a look at a proposal. But whatever it is we can do to get access to that space for this winter, because we're kind of throwing ourselves on the mercy of the school committee here. You know, if you could take it into consideration, if there's anything that you would need us to provide you with, we'd be more than happy to do that. We did have a small group play basketball during the winter up in Greenfield last year. It was a fully masked league. Protocols were implemented with mask breaks, and everything worked well. We had about an eight-game season, and there were no issues. So, you know, we would sort of do everything we need to do to have a safe season.
Could I ask you a couple?
Sure.
Preliminary questions. So pre-COVID,
Yep.
what did the schedule look like? Was it like one night during the week and a game on the weekend?
So Saturdays are reserved for games, right? Chris did the schedule for our last full season. And the gym is used up pretty consistently Monday through, Monday through Friday?
Pretty much every day.
Yeah, almost every, so once the school closes, you know, around 4 o'clock, the gym is usually in use right up until, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock. So we have one-hour practices rotating in and out of those two spaces, the cafeteria and the gymnasium, all night long, so.
And the percent, or the number of kids, did you say it was about roughly 100 kids?
Yeah, what did we have? Well over 100, 130?
I think it was 150.
150-ish?
Any thoughts on how, what percentage of that are already existing Norris students?
I would say 75%.
Yeah, I would say.
And just the small version that you did in Greenfield, I think you said?
Yep.
Do you have the written protocols?
We do.
Spelled out that might be shared?
We do, we could share them. I could pull the protocols from that league and pass it along to the school committee if you'd like.
And this isn't until December, but when would you need?
So we would need, we would need access to the space toward the end of October because we'd need to run evaluations and then tryouts for the suburban teams. So I would say 20th of October, somewhere around there, we could probably work with. And I'm not volunteering, Chris, over here, but you can see, he can move stuff, Eliza, so if you need help moving anything at the school, just call us, and we'll be there.
So I do know, this is just, I haven't opened it to the other committee members yet, but from my stance, so our next meeting is October 13th,
Okay.
which would be before that, so.
Okay.
I want to hear what everybody else has to say, but then I think, my gut is to take all this information in, turn it over to administration
Okay.
after they hear concerns and points from ours, and then to come, I would think to come back on October 13th with a recommendation of whether it's false or not. And I have some other questions, but they're not directed to the SYAA.
Okay, no problem.
Any committee members have a question for the SYAA?
Yeah. How many kids per team are you typically...
So it varies depending on the age group, the younger groups. You know, you could, you know, seven, you could have a roster of seven players. When we get to the older age groups, you're looking at 10, 11, 12-person teams.
And how many teams on practice nights are using the gym at any given time?
So four, four teams every hour would essentially be the maximum capacity.
Two adults per team?
Uh, yeah, so we'd have four individual teams, so four coaches with... Yeah, so we'd have four individual teams, so four coaches, with, and each team would be using like half of the cafeteria and half of the gymnasium. So four would be the total.
So it's in two separate rooms, though?
Two separate, yep. We have the cafeteria.
So you're looking, I mean, twenty-five people at most for, for practices.
Yeah.
Spaces.
Yep.
And how many games are occurring simultaneously?
How many games do we currently?
And how simultaneously, what are we looking at?
The games run on Saturdays. We start really first thing in the morning around nine o'clock, and then we play them all day long. We have them going on in the cafeteria and the gymnasium, right up until around twelve-thirty, one o'clock.
But in each one, how many games are simultaneously occurring? So, so one game.
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to talk all the time here. Has there been any discussion about spectators and how many parents would be allowed?
We have not discussed the spectator issue yet, because we, we wanted to make a run at having a space first, but we'll take a look at that and also look at what the MIAA has for policy and really use that as guidance for putting any kind of spectator policy together that we might have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think we'd probably have to mirror any of the mask mandates that are in place at that time.
Absolutely.
For anyone entering the building if this goes forward.
Yeah, we assure you, whatever COVID protocols exist will be implemented.
Masks are required for indoor sports right now, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, with one hundred percent consistency. And our team played in Greenfield in a masked league, and, you know, difficult for the kids to a certain extent, but actually worked better than I thought it would. So these kids are troopers, so.
Is there any custodian after practices to like wipe down, anything that needs to be wiped down? I, you know, that's something just to.
So I think that that's a question for administration.
For you guys to figure out, yeah, okay.
Can we just finish? Any other questions for the SYAA?
Well, first of all, thank you for investing in the kids and.
You're welcome, it's a pleasure.
Helping them have fun during the winter, which is always a hard time to.
It's a pleasure.
Get kids exercise and show them a good time. I really appreciate all the SYAA volunteers that helped make it happen.
You're welcome.
I'm wondering, this is kind of another administration slash legal question, if we need some sort of COVID waiver?
So the schools. Right, that would be.
Yeah.
We'll get to those questions in a minute.
Yeah.
But any questions specifically to Patrick or the SYAA?
Well, I assume you guys are willing to sign waivers if you have.
We, yeah, so we, yeah, I mean, at this point, I think, you know, we're open, we're an easy group of people to work with. You know, we're open to doing whatever it is the school committee and administration directs us to do, and we'll do it with a smile on our faces.
Awesome. So I think, yeah, my, my questions are more.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks again. Okay, awesome, thank you again for doing that. All the, all the SYAA volunteers in this town, I mean, just do tremendous job for the kids.
Lot of fun.
Do you happen to know what other communities are doing around here for this season? Just because I assume you're probably in contact with those folks more.
Yeah, so I've been in touch with some folks, and so I do know that their seasons are happening. I will reach out to them to get some more specifics about exactly what their protocols are going to be, but everybody seems to be operating off of the, the premise that we're going to adopt the recommendations from MIAA, because those are, you know, those are the experts who are putting that guidance out. So my assumption is that people are following whatever that guidance is, but I can get some more specifics this week for sure. And I could, I mean, I can forward it to Eliza, and she can pass it on to the school committee if you'd like.
That'll be great.
Perfect.
Are there any requirements for the, you know, the volunteers who are running the teams being vaccinated? We were talking about that today, tonight, as far as just.
Yeah, again, I think that goes back to the MIAA guidance. You, the MIAA guidance doesn't have mandatory vaccination for, for coaches. So, no, and the SYA sports that are going on right now don't have that requirement either built into the process. I guess if the school committee adopts that, then that's probably something the SYA would would take a look at. But right now, we would just, if, if we're, if the coach is coaching and the, the students have to be masked, then the coaches are going to be masked too. The way it worked in Greenfield, you wore a mask the entire game. There was two breaks, one in the first half and one in the second half, where the players got about, I don't know, ninety seconds or a couple of minutes to pull their masks down, just socially distanced away from each other. So the coaches will totally be masked if, if we get to basketball and we're still all wearing masks, so, which I assume we will be.
Okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
So I guess some of the questions that came up, and they, we don't necessarily need the answers tonight, but, you know, the question about custodial staff, my guess is you already have something in place for that, because in the past, custodial staff.
Yeah.
Being in the building on Saturdays when we're closed.
Yep.
One question that I would have is, pre-COVID, other than the annual town meeting, what other groups, other than SYA, regularly access the school?
Right.
Because one of my cautions would be, you know, if we're going, if we're going to open the school, which we've made a decision not to, but I understand the request and we need to consider it, is how far, if we do open, how far do we open it? So I don't know what the past practice has been, if there's forty-seven different groups that rotate through the school after hours?
So Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the science guy coming in, you know, different programs that want to have an art program or a science program after school. Not many, but I did think of that. You know, if you say yes to one, then the floodgates will be open, because I know it's a visitor thing. That's where the whole premise came from. You know, what do we do? And plus, the gym has storage in it, like, like Patrick said. So they, they will ask, and they will want to come once we, once we do this, which, you know, is a decision that we have to make. And when we, right now, I'm down a custodian, having a hard time filling the, the spot of that eight-hour position. We have two part-times coming in. It's kind of sporadic, it's not, you know, happening, we're finding it hard to do as much as we were doing last year with what we have this year, because we don't have the extra COVID money custodian helping us again, like we did last year. So we had that halftime extra person just wiping all surfaces down all day long. That's all he did. We don't have that this year. I don't want to put any barriers, I want this to work, I want SYAA to be able to come in, but we do need to, you know, really think about how do we keep it safe for everybody to do so. And, you know, the difference is, is you might have fifth and sixth graders come in to play basketball, and parents are okay with leaving them and, and going away, but when you have first and second graders playing basketball, the parents are probably not going to want to just leave them. So now you're increasing, you know, the capacity of the audience and the bleachers and the bathrooms and hand sanitizing. So it's just a lot to think about. But like I said, I don't want to sound negative about it. I want to figure out a way to make it happen, because I agree, I, you know, the kids need to do stuff.
Right. So I, I think, I, so I just say that to be, you know, especially with seventy-five percent of the population being existing Norris kids, they're already in the school and that.
Yeah.
Much like the, the, the arts and the music and the library, you know, to the extent that we can have them, I, I want to have them. So having the sports and the extracurricular, I want to have them. But I guess if, if, school committee sets the policy, it's up to the administration whether or not we can do it. So, so I'm looking, I think the committee is looking for administration to come back and say, yes, we can, but here's a very narrow defined field, it can only be the gymnasium and the cafeteria, and here are the restrictions.
Right.
Versus just, let's throw open the doors, per se.
Right.
So, just, so normally, normally, we don't have any talk, but we can, you want to talk in your official capacity?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I just wanted to mention, there's a group that did use the gym pre-COVID on Sundays, and that was through the council on aging. They played pickleball during the winter months, Sundays for a couple of hours.
Gotcha.
Every week.
Thank you.
And John and I did meet with the Board of Health last night, and they were very helpful.
Yes.
And their advice is really to not make a decision right now, but to watch the trends. And I didn't know that, that you guys needed a decision by October twentieth. I was thinking in my mind after, after Thanksgiving. But they did say that the less close contact, the better, and to really watch the trends.
Awesome. Did you, were you going to say something?
Yeah. Are we assuming that yes to one is yes to all?
I think it depends on what we're being at. Right now, the policy is that Nor, we have voted that Norris is closed. So that remains in place. Any other action requires a vote of this board, so that would be a change of policy. So I would be, I would be asking for administration to come forward with language for us to approve. Unless they say, just throw open the doors and it's business as usual, which I don't think there are. So it's, I'm, I think it's reasonable for us to put this on the agenda for October thirteenth, right, which is before the, it's a week before the twentieth. And, and, you know, let, gives administration thirty days to work on it and see how they feel, to see what the trends are. I like the idea of the MIAA guidance that's coming up, you know, whatever that is, incorporating that, if it's already being done. They have existing protocols, they have existing protocols in place, sharing that with us, and that might help.
So quick, just a couple, because you mentioned a practical issue that I just want to share, because we dealt with it up in Greenfield, but the spectators and increasing the amount of people that are in that space. So again, if, if we need to limit the number of people in that space, we'll make that very clear in whatever policy we send out to parents. And in Greenfield, there were no spectators. We, what we can do is just do a Facebook Live feed. We did it in Greenfield, the parents sat in their cars and watched the game, and it was a way around it. So we can deal with practical issues like that.
We do appreciate the offer of paying for storage, because.
We understand this is your way of the school thing, so.
Part of the reason that I asked about that is, you know, the way I'm thinking is, we say no to basketball, it blows up their season, right? Because they can't, like, they can't just play outside in a snowstorm or whatever, it's not football. But other organizations might be able to turn to other spaces to be creative and flexible. So for example, like, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are chartered groups, so they could turn to their charter organization, which I think is the Congregational Church, and ask to use their space. They don't have to use the gym. So although, that's why I'm saying.
It's a valid point that might be, could be worked into the policy, as to what is considered, what isn't considered, if, if they even feel that we're, we're in a place where we can make an accommodation.
I would be hard-pressed to say no if it means that thing can't happen. And administration signs off. I wouldn't want to do that. But if we can say no and the thing can still happen, then I'm more on the fence.
Right. Any other thoughts?
Within that outside group thing, we also had a parent email about coming in for lunches with the kids. So that's, if that could go into that chunk somehow, whether it can or can't happen.
Yeah, we, we asked that at the Board of Health, that's, no, not, not at this time.
Correct, correct.
Unless we do something like an outside picnic, or.
Yes.
Be creative.
Possibly make arrangements ahead of time with a brown bag lunch to go.
That's right, yeah.
The student, the pre-K or the kindergarten can have lunch outside with their grandparents, which was what that specific was. Because the restrictions within the school.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I just figured while talking about outside groups, that might come up again, too.
Well, this Sunday is Grandparents' Day, so, if you didn't know.
No, I didn't.
No, I didn't, no.
It sounds like most of us want, are on board with, you know, getting back to a place where we can support athletics and, you know, and hopefully improve people's mental health and, you know, socialization, especially in the fall. So I think we want to, we're hoping this happens. I want, I would like to see basketball.
Okay.
In safe ways.
Okay, I just think, sorry, two points. One, I agree, I think the basketball would be great. I know, for example, a lot of the local hockey programs ran last winter, they put programs in, or certain policies in place regarding the limiting the number of parents in with the children, the age groups of the parents are allowed, it seemed to really work well to provide the kids an ability to engage, but also to limit the number of people in a building at a time. And I think, thinking about those minutia could really help make it happen. I think the second thing is to go back to the, the policy, just because I really want to see this policy done right. Mandatory vaccination, the way it's written, it says anyone, any volunteers will be on school premises on a regular or recurring basis.
Right.
There is no, it is, as I say, during the school day. So my concern would be, are coaches going to be required to, I don't think parents count into that. I think coaches would probably count into the policy as, the draft policy as written. And I'd hate to say, you know, for a coach to show up on the first day of practice and say, well, you didn't send in your COVID vaccination proof, therefore you can't be here to coach your team. Or alternatively to that, I, I think the second part of that that needs to be thought about going forward from the administration side is how to obtain documentation on outside volunteers who are coming in. I think employees is very clear, but if, if in fact this policy does apply, I'm not saying it does or doesn't. I think if, if it's determined that it does apply to anyone coming into the building on a recurring basis, inside or outside of school hours, whether or not they're there on school business, or as a, as, for example, a basketball coach, does this policy apply to them? So I just, just something to think about, I think, when drafting.
Paralleled to that, we, we, we require, Norris requires, district requires, all volunteers into the school during school hours to be Corey certified, right?
Yeah.
Does that apply after, I, I think SYA already does it on their own anyways, but do we ever, in the past, pre-COVID, did we ever follow up with those coaches, say, okay, you know, you're coming to school afterwards? Or no, because the school was technically closed to the student body?
I think that whoever fills out the paperwork to rent the space is making sure that happens.
So we, yeah, so we make sure that all our coaches are Corey, but then we keep everything, you know, behind your.
Yep. So if we went down that road, right, which you have to add the language.
And that very well might be, absolutely. Or something that we need to separately look at, you know, third-party organizations outside of school hours shall maintain their own records and certify to the, to the administration of status. That's fine. I'm just saying it's something to kind of, I don't know if it needs to be in this policy, but I'm just saying it's something that should be in the back of our minds.
One other question for administration, you don't have to answer now, but what is done with the overlap for after-school program? And you must have done that in other years, just curious about that.
I'll answer.
You don't have to.
Well, fortunately, but unfortunately, our after-school program has grown, and we have lots of kids. And because of COVID, we are using more spaces to separate groups of students. So part of the language that we'll probably come up with is, we wouldn't be able to allow any outside groups to use the gym or the cafeteria until about five o'clock. I'll work on that, but, but I have had some early conversations about, with the after-school program, about what time could they actually get in? You know, in the past, we've allowed kids come as early as three-thirty, three-fifteen, and, and it gets, it's, it's too much. It's this overlap of, of people just on top of each other. So it's easier if we have a good, solid idea of how long our after-school program kiddos are staying until, so now that the year has started, how many are really here till five o'clock? So not many stay until, I mean, I'm sorry, till six o'clock. We have a very small number from five to six. So we could probably open it up at five and just concentrate the four or five kids that are left at that time in one space, other than the gym or the cafeteria, but we will look into that before we come back with a decision.
Okay.
Thank you for the great feedback and suggestions.
All right, next on the list is transportation fiscal year twenty-three, in-house busing. So I've, I believe I forwarded to everybody an article that came out of Worcester, where the Worcester School Committee decided to end their contract with their busing company and go in-house. Now, some background, and Bobby kind of alluded to this when she came up with the budget, and said, transportation doesn't actually fall underneath us in Southampton. I don't know, I think it's the same in all the other towns, or maybe not?
No, it's just Southampton.
Just Southampton, so that's actually a select board slash finance committee. It was pulled out of our budget to adjust for the net, net school spending, to maintain that number at one point. So I don't know, we're in discussions now, because twenty-twenty-three would be our first year of a new contract with Durham, or whoever the winner is.
Right, I would have to verify that, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's up.
Okay, but the past practice has been, or past experiences, is we put busing out the bid and we get one bid. And, and so it is what it is and goes through. I think it would only behoove us to just go through the exercise. We probably don't want to buy eleven buses and then be dealing with that. But do you remember offhand that the dollar amount that Southampton pays just for Norris?
For, it's around two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand.
Per year, and then you can probably safely double that number for Hampshire Regional. So it's a half a million, six-hundred-thousand-dollar line item for the town. So I think we, we should go through the exercise. I think it's more complicated because of how Southampton does it, outside of the school committee. Unless everyone's, anybody has objections to it, I, I think we should, by me, bring it forward to the select board to be explored through the finance committee.
The numbers for buying, purchasing eleven buses to support the entire Hampshire Regional?
Southampton uses eleven right now, and Hampshire Regional uses more. But the eleven buses that come to Southampton on the second shift do a partial swing.
Eight right now.
Right?
We're, we're discussing numbers, so you said eleven. We're short one right now, but it's.
I think we have nine buses right now. I think we have eight right now, but normally nine.
Nine plus a pilot, right?
I don't know what a pilot means.
That's a car.
It's a small, it's. The minibus?
The Honda Pilot. We have X number of buses.
We have eight right now, but we're supposed to have nine.
Correct.
Right.
And then I think you have a mini one, but anyway.
No, I think that's included.
Does the preschool be in with the separate?
Well, that, that we already fund privately, or, or through, but, so I wasn't, I wasn't aware that we're short a bus. Is there a reason? Is it a lack of drivers? And is that causing?
So there are two buses that have merged onto one and the route is, is long. However, I'm told that should only be a couple more weeks because someone's in training. So they do have a driver, but the driver had to be trained.
Is that the particular bus where the kids are sitting three to a seat?
They don't have a seat.
There's a bus with three to a seat, I thought we didn't want that.
Well, I know, but.
They don't have a choice if there's no driver.
Yeah. So.
They did just hire six drivers, but they got to get their training and certifications and all that.
All for the district?
Yeah, for the whole district.
Okay.
I don't think there's a bus with three to a seat.
I could, I can send you a, a picture of the bus when it stops tomorrow.
Okay, and is it a family that are sitting three to a seat?
I didn't get on the bus.
Okay. Well, don't start rumors, John.
No, I'm just asking.
I looked up a route, I didn't see any that were anywhere near fifty-two kids on a bus, so.
But the point of the exercise is, just for the committee's point of view, our buses that service Norris, prior to servicing Norris, they do a loop for Hampshire Regional. There are other buses that do a loop for Hampshire Regional that go off and do West Hampton, Williamsburg and all that, right?
Correct.
So what, what I would say is, we look at the whole package, because altogether, how many buses? How many buses at Hampshire Regional? That would be. Twenty. So there's twenty buses that then get divided up for the second run through the elementary schools. So twenty buses, twenty drivers. It's much easier to spend capital money to purchase the buses with the one-point-eight-million-dollar gift that we got. I think now's the time to look at it, if we're going to look at inhousing the busing services, to eliminate the, the one bid. So if there's no objection from the committee, I'm going to bring that forward on the town side and then I'll work in communication with our business manager and copy the superintendent, just to have preliminary discussions and see if it's got any traction.
So you'll let me know what you need, if you need something from me?
Yeah. You guys good with that? Okay. Any other new business? Ongoing business, we have the fall health and safety protocols, masking, social distance and testing options. The only thing that I want to add here, and I should have set it up above on public comments, is for the record, we did receive an email from Jennifer Newman dated September seventh. That was forwarded to everybody that I'll just quickly read. I'll read the highlights of it. We currently have a kindergarten and the second, and a second grader at Norris was able to watch. No, that wasn't Jennifer. Well, I mean, there's two Jennifers, but.
Okay, yeah, got it.
Right. Right, you're not new.
Threw me off.
Right, we were allowed to have more than one Jennifer?
Yes, anyways. I currently have a kindergarten, second grader at Norris, was able to watch the last school committee meeting via the recording of it. Just want to encourage the school committee to get the parents involved as much as possible this year when it comes to big decisions regarding hot topics such as masking the children. I think if we learned anything from last year, we know communication is very important. I know the teachers took their own survey regarding the masks, last vaccinations, et cetera. So perhaps a survey from parents about what they would prefer for their children would be appropriate. I think if parents feel they were included in decisions, maybe it would take away some of the tension regarding these heated issues. I understand that masks are mandated right now, and I think that probably won't change at this point in time. However, I would like for the school committee to consider at least allowing the children to take their mask off when at their desk. If people can go into a restaurant and take their mask off at a table, shouldn't the children be able to sit at their own desk, three feet from their friends, and take their mask off? I think since Norris is still a distancing desk, this is safe for kids to do while staying seated. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts. So we have that. Now, the only, the, the other information that came out is under this topic. We did receive the updated PPE status and materials from this PLODA. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Were there any questions on the supplies? It seemed to be, on a quick glance, that we were in a good position with our supplies. There was only one order that was being placed?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that sent out to us, the PPE?
I think I only sent it to John, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, here you go.
I didn't realize it was even on the agenda that I needed to send it to everybody. I thought you were just asking me.
Oh, okay, no, if we could, if we could just put that on monthly.
Okay.
It's one of the commitments we made to the STA.
Okay.
That we would share that.
Do you give teachers masks every day?
No.
Oh, okay.
We rarely use adult masks, but we do have a box outside the office just in case someone needs it, or there's breaks or something. Yeah, we haven't been going through a lot of this stuff. I mean, the, the tubs of wipes, the teachers still asked for this year. Last year, we went through a lot of them because kindergarten and first grade was eating in the classroom. So we wiped the desk before eating, we wiped the desk after eating, after eating. This year, you know, we still have the hand sanitizer outside every classroom, those are being refilled constantly. Hand washing stations are still being stocked, well-stocked every day, so that there are some kids washing their hands in the class and some go out into the hallway so that they're all not gathered by the sink. So it's, you know, it's really good that we got to get all this stuff and that we get to update it, so, or keep it stocked.
Okay.
How have the students been responding to the masking policy?
You know, it's so funny, because preschool started today and I've visited the morning sessions and the afternoon sessions, and I'm just amazed that these three-year-olds come to school with a mask on, like it's always been the case. We haven't had any issues, to my knowledge. Maybe teachers have had to ask kids, you know, get your mask up over your nose or whatever. But we haven't had any disciplinary issues with students refusing to wear masks at all, last year or this year, so far. They've been very compliant.
And how has lunch been working out?
Lunch has been working out good. We had, I think I had that in my principal's report, we have, everybody's able to eat lunch in the cafeteria. There's a little bit of an overlap with kindergarten and fourth grade and then second grade. But my cafeteria manager, Kathleen Keaty, has, it's, it's beginning to be a well-oiled machine. And their kids are doing a great job, so they're sitting at least four feet apart on the ends of a table, all facing the same way. They have their masks on until they're ready to eat, and then when they finish and they throw their things away, or the cafeteria people will come and collect the things from the younger students. They put their masks back on when they're done eating. It's, the, the teachers are happy that the kids are eating in the cafeteria. The kids are happy that they have another space to go to. It keeps the classrooms cleaner because there's no food and crumbs all over the floor. It's definitely, you know, it, it was hard the first couple of days, but I think we got it down. Then I had to ask her to come up with seating charts for students, in case we have to contact trace, because they're not six feet apart when they're eating. So they would become close contacts if there was a positive case from a student. And she's, she worked on that in the last couple of days, and I think we're, we're good to go now.
How are the outside spaces being utilized for outdoor teaching and masking? Is that, how's that going?
So I noticed today, when I left, one of the tents was down. They, they are using it more of a mask break, not really outside teaching, because I don't have furniture to put underneath them, so it's not super comfortable. But they, I feel like they used it more in the spring than they've used it now. The weather's been pretty good, where we've been able to open the windows. It hasn't been so uncomfortable, I think the first couple of days was uncomfortable with the humidity, but lately it's been nice. They definitely take them out at least twice a day for mask breaks. Plus they have recess, every, everybody has recess every day, K and one has two recesses a day. So it hasn't been, it hasn't been bad, but they're, they're not well utilized as an instructional space.
I felt it was really hard to try to teach outside. It was fine for like a read aloud or something like that, but as far as teaching, you, you really need like a board behind you or your materials, so it's almost impossible to teach outside.
Like snack time for the kids.
Snack, read aloud, but teaching, no.
Is it being?
They do take their snack outside a lot of times. Teachers will take them outside and they'll walk and eat, or sit and eat, I noticed that.
And as far as masks getting changed and having multiple masks, I know we have to send in with our preschooler multiple masks, are teachers being encouraged or reminded to have the masks changed over throughout the day?
You know, so after hearing from parents, I feel like, and I did offer that we could, we could encourage the students to change their masks halfway through the day. We have asked kids to take a sec, to bring a second mask in their backpack. But really, the only time they are changing the mask is if it breaks. If they feel like there's something wrong with it and they tell the teacher, that kids have come down and said, you know, I forgot my mask, and they get right off the bus, I forgot my mask, or, or something, we give them, we have plenty of masks to give out. However, I haven't really said, you know, ask every child halfway through the day if they need to change their mask.
I feel like we said you can't, we can't put that on the teachers at the last meeting. This, that, that was said multiple times, like that pressure was not wanted for the teachers when we even brought up the discussion of masks before it was mandated.
Yeah, like after lunch, I think, put your new mask on, like everyone kind of just does that. I, you know, I think it's something, the younger grades, it's more of the issue with the younger kids who maybe are going to lick and.
Right, I think if a teacher notices that a child's mask is wet or dirty, a lot of times they'll say, you know, let me get you another mask, or do you have another mask in your backpack? I can't say a hundred percent of the time that they've noticed it, and it makes me feel, I'm sure that they would feel sad if I brought it to their attention that the kiddo is sitting there all day with a wet mask. So, you know, we do the best that we can. I, like I said, we have plenty of masks if kiddos need them. But if we don't notice that, you know, if it's a, a navy blue mask, you are less likely to notice that it's wet. Even this kind of mask, you might not notice because it's double-layered. I'm not really sure how to.
A lot of times the teachers aren't with them at lunch either to be the one to say, go change your mask. I know I'm not with my students at lunch, and when I come back, this is just my routine, they, they go right from lunch to the, the little ones, obviously, right to the bathroom, and usually like nap or rest, or some go home, in your case, mine's full day. So there's not really that slot. Of course, if I see a kid with a wet mask, or I have the kid who's used one as a tissue today, obviously I say, go get, you know, we're going to go get you a new mask. But for the most part, we have so much that we have to fit in our day that it's not, okay, everybody, let's take a switcher mask break time. It's, it's, the day is a lot busier.
Ten seconds, thirty seconds to switch a mask out. So I'm, I'm having a hard time with the excuse of saying that we can't have, and remind the kindergartners and the first graders who do need some extra help to, to sort of after lunch. Okay, let's change our mask.
I mean, I could encourage the.
Is it wet, let's change it, yeah.
I didn't know what you were, if you were asking me about fifth grade, fourth grade kindergarten, preschool.
No, it's the younger ones that do need more help, yeah. I think a fifth grader should be responsible for.
It's been a very small, you know, not in the classroom every day to catch these things. I know that the teachers have helped them and changed them, and I've heard from a very small amount of parents who are unhappy with their children's mask. I will, you know, remind teachers to remind students that, you know, if your mask is wet or dirty, or let's change it out, make sure that they have an extra one in their backpack. But sometimes I think that same mask is going home and coming back and going home and coming back, and nobody's really noticing, you know? So we have extra masks if needed, but sometimes it's hard to step on a parent's toes, too, and, and make that call, so I'll remind the teachers that, to remind the students.
Yeah, what if, so since our last meeting, Desi made the ruling that they made to put the masking in place, and it doesn't look like they're going to change that directive until October first, potentially. And unless you guys know differently, I think the only change that's going to come down is going to be at the middle of high school level, with possibly the eighty percent vaccination rate. From Norris's point of view in that population, what are you envisioning? If any changes on October second, before our meeting?
No. Are you?
Changing the masks, Andy? Whether Desi changes it or not, I mean, how, I don't understand how we could take masks off if the kids aren't vaccinated.
Were you meaning more along if, if the commissioner pulls back on it and is no longer mandating it? Is that what?
Well, I'm saying if on October, if October first, the guidance that comes down, the only change is the eighty percent and above. There's not going to be status quo, I guess, so to speak.
Well, this committee voted to implement masks before the commissioner said we had to have masks, right?
Right. So, right, so generally, the public can only speak unless they're on the agenda during the public comment section.
I just want, one, one, one point here.
Well, well, but there, we're not.
Just sitting one hour.
Public can't talk.
I'm going to say, sitting one hour, ten thousand parts per million of carbon dioxide is being, being consumed.
Okay, but we're not in public comment, so please sit down.
I just made a comment.
Awesome, okay. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, it's not always right.
Where's my gavel? All right, so the committee meets again on October thirteenth. So I think the committee, well, I don't know what the committee wants, I know what I want. So I, I would like to know what our options are going to be on October thirteenth, if anything, to come in. So there's been suggestions and there's been some other communities within the Commonwealth that are challenging Desi after October first, or are planning on. Now, right now it's all talk, but I guess I would like to know from Russ, or Attorney Dupree, is, if it really is, as of last year, local control and local authority, and this year, where the commissioner actually made a decision, is this committee bound? What's the ramification if this committee does not follow the guidance from Desi? From our attorney? You understand, you understand what I'm asking?
I do. So if, if on, at the next meeting, you're like, no, you know what, nobody needs to wear masks, what's going to happen to us? Because I did have to sign a, an attestation form for the state that we are following the mandate. So please don't put my license in jeopardy, but I will definitely ask.
Is that the one I just signed? The four of us, the physician, and I thought that was about medication.
I'm not sure what you signed. No, I signed something else that only I signed.
All these are not I signed.
No, I don't know what that is.
Okay.
I'm thinking if the mandate does get lifted, not even just putting the vaccine part on it. I don't even know how to word it the right way. Would we be able to do something about masking if that mandate was lifted?
I, I can ask, we're meeting with him Friday. The way it was worded to us is that until younger children can be vaccinated, and eighty percent of them, it's kind of a non-negotiable from the state. That's what we've been told. I can ask commissioner if you, if you guys decided to fight it and not have a mask mandate?
No, 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 so I'm, so I'm making an assumption here. I'm making an assumption that October fourth ruling that comes from Desi, whatever the commissioner says or does, is not going to alter the existing guidance that's in place for Norris.
Correct.
So if after that, the committee decides to go against.
Desi.
Desi. I'd want to know from legal counsel, what is the ramification?
Okay.
Such as say, like our town numbers happen to be at one case.
Well, that would be justification for doing it.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. I mean, it's, well, there is one lawyer here, but it's, it's, it's easy for, for five laypeople to sit up here and say, okay, well, we'll just do all this and that. But we know what the guidance says, we have to know what the other side of the argument is. And if it's the mere fact that he's not going to allow us snow days, then there's, there's really, there's no teeth in that fight. And it may be that Attorney Dupree comes back and says, the commissioner really doesn't have any authority to do this because we're not under a state of emergency. I don't know until we actually have Dupree put it in writing on what, if anything, are. I don't know until we actually have Dupree put it in writing on what, if anything, are the consequences. Because then he can get it in the public record and we can share it. And whether, whether we agree with, with those that wrote in or, or agree with those that didn't write in, it's another fact that we need prior to the thirteenth.
Okay.
I would think.
Now, I understand, yep.
And I know you touched on social distancing, but no issues there. And is gymnasium currently happening outside with the nice weather?
Yes, as much as possible.
Are we getting COVID updates or, you know, as far, like we did last year on Fridays, you know, the number of students or cases within...
Yes, you would've gotten one already, it started last Friday. Did you, did you not get it?
I don't really get it. We did, okay.
Okay. And all families received that as well.
Okay, great. And that will continue, like on a weekly basis?
Every Friday.
Okay, great.
That one, that one out to the Norris parent last?
It went out to everybody through the district.
It's in the same email that has the invite for the...
Yes.
The pool testing for Thursday. It's kind of, I, I didn't see it either until I scrolled down.
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah, it's a weekly COVID updates, right.
I'd always saw it on my school committee email account, I, I just didn't remember seeing it on my parent's.
Is that the bottom?
It's the si- yeah, it's the same one, that one out to everybody.
I have one other question. Um, as far as masking and, you know, some of the kids have exemptions. Are they having to be tested, like they're saying teachers, if they choose not to be vet? Like, so a kid who has an exemption of not to wear a mask, do they have to get tested each week?
No.
Are, are they offered a shield or an alternate accommodation? Like if you can't wear a mask, you can wear a face shield?
If, if I could interject here, are there currently any exemptions for masks at Norris? And if, if so, just what's the number? Are we talking about two hundred kids? Are, are there any exemptions for masks?
There are exemptions. I know of, do you know?
Do I give a number? The number's very low.
So, the number is less than five, so probably will not be revealed to identify it. So, on a population of four hundred and something, so, less than one percent, less than half a percent, possibly? Now, are they being offered alternative shields?
Alternative accommodations for safety measures if they can't, yeah, if they can't mask, what else?
They're, they're offered alternative, um, accommodations, but based on what was given by the medical profession determines if an alternative is appropriate or not.
Even like a desk shield?
Yeah, desk trifle holder.
So, I think, I think where, where possible, it's given unless the, unless a licensed physician has specifically said you can't do it. That would be the only time it's not, give or take, right?
Right.
And then, so the school would have a note on file from somebody who's board certified.
Saying you can't have a desk shield?
I'm not a doctor, I'm just, that's what I, that's what I heard.
Our mask policy was clear that if, if somebody provided us a doctor's note with the medical condition that they were exempt from the policy. Our policy was not very clear in that, um, you, you have to use an alternative. I mean, it's strongly suggested, uh, but I do have the copy of the policy in your packet. Okay, so, students are gonna be supported in their individual circumstances and developmental levels in order to comply with the mask-wearing. Face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative in some instances. Um, so it doesn't say it's, it's mandatory. Exceptions will be made, uh, for those, for, for whom compliance is, sorry, my glasses keep fogging up. For whom compliance is not possible due to documented medical conditions or behavioral needs. A written note from the physician is required for a requested exemption and must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse.
Okay.
So, I'm hearing that there's, there's a note, there's a line in there about additional options. Are they being offered and tried out to see what could be to protect the other students?
We, if, if you'd like to amend the policy to say that, um, the doctor's note has to say that no alternatives could be afforded, is, is, is that the direction that you would like to go?
Uh, not exactly. I wa- I don't think I wanted to amend the policy, I just wanna see if there's other...
Is the administration attempting to exercise all avenues to get some sort of level of protection in there, if at all possible?
We're doing the best job that we can.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't wanna violate anybody's, um, confidentiality or anything. But short of putting that addition into the policy, that amendment, that, um, the doctor's note would require that no alternative form of, of a shield or face mask or is feasible, it's not in our power to, um, enforce that. We can, we can suggest it all we want, but we can't enforce that.
What do you guys think?
I, I was under the interpretation, and it's my mistake, because last year, when we had the discussion, it said, "If they can't do a face mask, it's gonna be a face shield with a hood coming down." And that would be the alternative.
But even with that, there were some children that that, that was not acceptable either.
Yeah, but that could be part of, I think what Dr. Bonneville was saying, that could be part of the exemption.
Well, so, that may very well be the case for these X number of children under five in quantity.
Yeah, but we don't know for sure.
We, as a committee, don't, but administration does. They just...
But we can't know if it's known, is what I'm hearing.
It's outside our period, we have to trust the administration that they're following policy. Because to go any further runs the risk of potentially identifying the individuals, which we cannot do in a public session.
Yeah, I don't wanna identify the individuals at all. But I don't think asking about a policy or a protocol identifies individuals, as far as I understand privacy.
I guess I just wanna hear that, like, you know, the best effort to ensure the safety of the classroom is being followed in this unprecedented historical event where the Delta variant is now absolutely infecting children.
I think we do the best we can based on doctors' recommendation or prescription, or whatever you call it, and without isolating a child. We can't isolate someone either.
Right.
And what we asked for parents, if they were gonna provide a note, it just has to say, "This child is exempt from the mask policy due to a medical condition." We didn't ask for a further explanation that they can't w- wear any alternative unless you wanna amend the policy.
And what, and that's signed by a physician though, by some, by a medical professional?
Primary care, yep.
Yep.
What potential hang-ups would there be in amending the appol- the policy to that effect?
None.
It's already been out, and I feel like parents already have. I don't know, I'm not really, I don't think we really need an amendment if it's only... I mean, yes, it's uncomfortable for a lot, and I know that, you guys have, we've talked about it, but I don't really think it, that we need to bring it to the level of the amendment.
But, yes, I hear you, I hear you. But any committee member that wants, if you want to amend the policy, then...
I'm not telling them they can't.
Right, you can, um... Well, the next steps to, I mean, any policy, whatever the policy was, school lunch prices would be to, uh, draft it, you know, take the existing policy, mark it up, share it, print it on the agenda. It would go to legal.
But this is the same policy here that's at all the other schools, so we're trying to stay consistent, right? So, our policy is the same at all the schools?
Yes, it is.
Yes and no.
Yeah, the basic premise is, is the same in all of them. You, you can do whatever you choose is best for the students of Norris.
Okay. I think for in single-digit numbers, I don't wanna make an amendment. If numbers are becoming excessive and case counts are going up, I think we need to get a lot more strict. Try to do the best we can, maybe with an amendment, but right now, probably, I don't...
I think that's, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
That if the numbers increase or if we're finding, right, case count's going up, or, um, the number of exemptions are climbing high, whatever we deemed high, then we can amend this policy instead of date that by, whatever date, we need a note that, that clearly specifies that.
Okay. Anything else on fall health and safety protocols?
Uh, I know I'm new to the game here, so I apologize if this has been brought up a lot, but just curious, the eye wave machines, where are we at with, how many replacements are left? Is that a continuing, ongoing budget item? Is that, how often do those need maintenance, kinda thing?
So, as far as I know, the eye wave machi- I mean, the eye wave machines, I do know, have been placed in every single unit event system in the building. As far as maintenance or changeover or anything like that, I, I don't think there's anything that we need to do. Um, my head custodian's not in right now, but I will find out for sure.
And I, I think, my memory's a little foggy on this, but I think we did sign a maintenance contract on the filters and all that, right?
Yes.
Well, so I guess that's the question, yeah. So, additional filters that are, how long are we...
We're out of rotation.
Okay.
Three times a year, and they're MERV thirteen's, and they were just changed before school started.
And the three, and I believe the three times a year is above, is more than what is recommended. It's recommended twice a year, so we're doing it three. Somewhere along the lines of the beginning of school, January, February-ish, like when the units are really being used the most. And that's part of the forty-two thousand dollars that we might be able to recoup.
And I just, is there any chance if we signed a longer-term contract that, 'cause I think these things are good, I mean, that could just can take care of COVID, which also, I assume, would filter out flu, cold, and other viruses in the air. Is there any thought about maintaining those for, you know, next indefinite period?
Do you know if the maintenance agreement we signed was for three years, or is it year-to-year?
I don't remember.
If not, it's not, it's not.
That's, that's fine.
Just curious, thank you.
But I do, I mean, just as far as that goes, we have the whole COVID thing, but I think we did get positive feedback from the nurses at, at Norris, having the MERV thirteen's. There was a significant, plus a lot of other things going on, significant decrease in illnesses. Nobody was really fearing the February break, you know, with, with the flu and having to get out of the building and all that stuff. So, I think it has much more positive benefits than just... Okay, if there's nothing else, next on the item is committee feedback on the five district working group. This is gonna stay on the agenda. Uh, we discussed it. I will make a note to, uh, send that to you, Dylan, so you have a chance to read it. And as you said, we're working on finding a date for the next upcoming meeting, which I think is gonna be towards the other September right now. We're waiting on legal counsel, the, maybe it's the twenty-ninth of September, if everybody agrees to.
I think so.
Yeah.
If people can make it. And I hope we can come to some resolution with this, because superintendent valuation, not that it's all about me, but superintendent valuation is part of that. So, now would be the time where we'd be discussing my goals, your goals for me, that kinda thing, which I've been working on, but it'd be nice to...
Yeah, and I think in, in general, from just our feedback from the last meeting was, we understood the three of the other four community, that we understood that one community supported us in the cost allocations, and the other three committees did it, and that community's done it, and that, that was fine. But I think our position is we go back to the nineteen sixty-six agreement, which gives weighted votes. Um, otherwise, the current setup is the whole taxation without representation, where we still pay fifty-six percent of the bill, but only allow twenty percent of the vote. And if memory serves me, I, I think that was really the only pushback that this committee had with the overall agreement, so... Our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be the second Wednesday of October, which I believe is the thirteenth, at six PM. Uh, just noting the time change, we were meeting at five-thirty, but it was suggested in a, um, which wasn't on the agenda here, five chairs. I didn't give you a five-chairs update. Um, but that, um, all committee regular meetings happen at six o'clock so that they're standard across the district, so that when central office staff need to attend, they, you know, they have times, ours is at five-thirty, one's at four. It's, everyone's gonna be at six o'clock.
You said the thirteenth?
Yes, isn't that the second Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm just confirming.
Yeah. October thirteenth at six PM here in Town Hall. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.